I'd like to call the Lafayette City Council to order for the May meeting. Would everyone please stand? And for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of... One nation, under God, indivisible, with... Thank you. Will the clerk conduct a roll call, please?
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Aldrich Meyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Corn and present.
Uh, do you want a public hearing prior to...
I don't think we...
Cause I thought there was a public hearing that was supposed to be held. No? No?
Not until there's...
No.
Very good. Okay. Well, we're a month ahead. You have received the minutes of the April 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Mr. Clinker?
I move we approve the minute as communicated.
Mr. Meyer?
Second.
All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign, thank you. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Report of city offices.
Clerk's office march, water works department march, water pollution control department march, police department February, fleet maintenance department march.
Those materials are on file in the city clerk's office. They are available for your examination anytime during the business hours of the clerk's office. Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2013-06, an ordinance amending chapter 4.06 of the Lafayette Municipal Code entitled Lafayette Farmer's Market.
Mr. Meyer?
Vote for approval of ordinance 2013-6.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Mr. Clinker or Mr. Heidi, either one of you. Any discussion by members of the common council? Yes ma'am?
Do we want to bring this up tonight, or did we want to... Well, I was thinking about the fact that we're changing signage for the farmer's market. And since we're already planning on, if it passes, changing signage. Um, I've talked to some vendors and a lot of people that frequent the farmer's market. And, um, they've talked about their disappointment some Saturday mornings when there's so much trash and broken bottles and things down along the curb. Um, and then when I spoke with the people who are responsible for cleaning that area, um, they talked about how they always go and do that Friday morning, but it's very difficult to do because there's still cars parked there. So my thought was, would it be possible to, um, not only amend the signage for the parking to be changed for Saturday morning, but possibly for Friday morning from 3:00 a.m. to noon, so that we can run street sweepers through there and really get it cleaned out well before the farmer's market Saturday?
Saying from 3:00 a.m.?
That way, the, uh, if the bars are open late Thursday night, they're, they, they can still have patronage... No, it'll be Thursday night, because then it'll be Friday morning, Friday at 3:00 a.m. to noon. So that, that gives the street crew, or stormwater, or water pollution, whoever has the street cleaner that does that time to get that area cleaned out really well.
3:00 a.m. Friday morning? Will it still be appropriate? Will it still be clean on Saturday morning when the market opens? So, just so I understand here before we go too far. So you're talking about 3:00 a.m. Friday morning, and Friday during the day it would still be closed to noon?
Well, the shift for the workers is what, 8:00 to noon? So you could even say 8:00 to noon if you wanted Friday morning, just long enough to get...
That whole area is, I mean, they're shook, real estate company...
That's what I was asking, I didn't know if it was possible.
...real estate company, uh, several of the businesses along there during the day use that. I don't think we could possibly keep that blocked off till noon. I think that those spots are full every day.
Plus, if you bring the street sweeper in that early, the downtown tenants that live downtown, they'll complain.
Okay, I was just, it was just a thought. I was just thinking of all the people that...
Actually, the street sweepers do come through real early on Friday mornings.
Right. I was talking to some people, I've talked to some people whose children have been cut on glass at the farmer's market on Saturday morning. It's there, and, and I know that the crew does a great job cleaning in between the cars, but there were always so many cars there. Yeah.
I gotta go around them, and I can't really do it.
Okay.
We just have to try to tell them to look, cause I just don't, we just can't keep that all blocked off. Especially on Friday, downtown is packed at the banks and stuff around the corner.
Alright, it was just a thought.
Any other comments by members of the common council?
This is Carson, economic development director. This was brought to our attention through Ray or Lafayette Commerce, who's managing the farmer's market on our behalf. They're asking for, um, it'd be a minor change in the ordinance that would allow towing to start at, um, towed parked cars that are in the area that are in violation of the ordinance, to start that towing at 6:00 a.m. rather than 6:30. That way, the vendors can gets, have ample time to get set up. I think that was over in the levee, but that was... Right now, the sign, the signage that's up there says no parking after 5:00 a.m. So there's a plenty, there's a whole hour grace period there before the towing would begin.
Just, uh, how many cars are towed away from there? I mean, on average?
Not a lot, but, um, you know, there's a few there. It seems like every Saturday morning, there's still one or two or three, um, that are still there. You know, they try and contact the owners and such, but sometimes, you know, they can't get ahold of them, and it causes a problem, cause a lot of the vendors have, um, you know, big items that they're bringing in, and their trailers and things, and it makes it very difficult and kind of dangerous sometimes, too.
Talking maybe two or three cars?
Yeah.
Any members of the audience wish to address this issue? And with the clerk then, conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-6.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-9.
An ordinance concerning the refunding by the City of Lafayette, Indiana of its sewage works revenue bonds of 2,000. Sewage works revenue bonds of 2,001 Series A, and sewage works revenue bonds of 2,006. Authorizing the issuance of sewage work refunding revenue bonds for such purpose, providing for collection, segregation, distribution of the revenues of the sewage works and safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said sewage work refunding revenue bonds. Other matters connected therewith and reviewing ordinances inconsistent therewith.
Mr. Dowling?
I know.
That was very good, very good. I move to, uh, hear and pass ordinance 2013-09. Second. Second reading, sorry. Questions by members of the common council? Comments? Mayor?
I'll be very brief, Mr. President. Uh, this is a continuation of the process that we started last year evaluating all the city's bonds in the various departments, uh, throughout our, our organization, looking for those opportunities and watching the markets where we felt that it might be advantageous to us to refund those bonds, uh, that would save substantial dollars, whether some of those that actually save tax dollars, or in this case, those that, uh, are paid for by our rate payers. And so we feel like we have a, a great opportunity here, uh, with, at this particular time for those bonds that are, are available and, uh, applicable to be refunded at this time. Uh, we're hoping to do very well on the interest rates, save a significant amount of money, and we'd appreciate your support. I'm not going to go into the long details since it's second reading, but we will have Piper Jaffrey's here to make a brief presentation on, uh, on kind of the savings that we're looking at, and then to answer any questions that anybody might have, and, uh, along with our legal counsel. We're going to as much depth certainly as you would like, but, uh, we'll, we'll keep it brief to begin with, and then answer your questions.
Is that a brief with a capital B in the middle of the sentence?
Hey, you're in charge.
Thank you.
You're in charge.
Yes, gentlemen.
Thanks, Mayor, councilmen, uh, men and women. Um, just a quick update. I know we had...
Your name's play, yeah.
Landon Bay and Piper Jaffrey.
Thank you.
Apologies. So we had books last time presenting the economics of the refunding as contemplated. And, um, just a brief update on the market. We've had a drop off in interest rates yet again, back to, um, December levels of last year. So, uh, from here, we've got an anticipated pricing of Thursday of this week, which is the point in time which we garner, um, commitments from investors almost worldwide, I guess you could say, uh, for purchase of the bonds. Um, uh, availability goes to the winning, you know, the, the lowest rates out there. So with that, we, um, we've got a pre, pre-pricing call planned for Wednesday, um, with Mike and other reps of the city, which will outline our, our proposed rates to enter the market with for formal period, um, order period on Thursday morning, and hope by noon, noon on Thursday to have final rates and, um, a willingness to sign the bond purchase agreement.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Pretty what else who would like to make a presentation?
I'll be briefly, capital B, Dennis Son with Bose McKinney and Evans. Uh, I really don't have anything other to add, other than to say, assuming the bond's price on Thursday and the bond purchase contract signed, uh, we'll have roughly two weeks to closing, and we'll be preparing the closing certificates and gathering signatures. Um, but otherwise, everything looks great at this point. We've got the rating and are all set to go.
What's the approximate rate, uh, as of today? Are you allowed to say that?
That's a land-in question.
If you're not allowed to say it, don't...
No, no, I, I mean, we can, I, I think we're, given that we're pricing so quickly here on Thursday, um, after we priced, would you anticipate being able to email an update to the council, maybe?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, coming, come Thursday, um, you'll know the final rates. Um, yeah, I think we were, what, 2:15 last time on an average basis. Um, there's a lot of bonds on the later maturities, so, um, we'll give you an update. I'm sure Mike can...
Right now? And what was the rate, uh, you know, ballpark?
Six something, wasn't it? Uh, three and five.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Are we still going to save about, uh, $5 million, is that what? More? 5.4. About 5.5.
If I can go percent and a half.
Is that alright?
I'm fine.
Any other questions by members of the, the audience? There being none, with the clerk then, conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-9.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. You're welcome back anytime you'd like to come back. Ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2013-10. An ordinance for appropriation of local highway user tax funds, county wheel tax funds, number 249.
With pleasure of the council. Mr. Aldrich Meyer?
I, uh, move we hear and approve ordinance 2013-10.
Um, second. Members of council, any comments?
Was this supposed to be a public hearing then, for this one?
We'll have to send it.
Yeah, after, after.
Any comments? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, as you know, uh, this is the yearly appropriation of the wheel tax. When we, uh, first started this process, we had decided that we would appropriate that money, uh, each year about this time, uh, when we had a pretty, pretty good feel of what that dollar amount would be. And also, uh, then designate the streets after our streets inventory, so everybody would know what projects we were working on. Uh, this year, uh, like last year with, uh, North Street, of the bulk of the money, if maybe not, and maybe all of the money, uh, will go towards Union Street. We're going to do a significant stretch of Union Street from down about Sixth Street all the way up to, uh, Erie Street. And the road will be totally milled, resurfaced, we'll be doing the curbs, the handicap ramps, and any other ADA issues to stay compliant that we see along that significant stretch of roads. And we will really be adding our first stretch of significant bike lanes. As you know, part of the Good to Great, uh, project that was done in our community when we looked at things that keeping families here and attracting young people here, and, uh, that creative class, we heard about trails, and we also heard about bike lanes. And so this is going to be one of our, uh, first real attempts at putting in some significant bike lanes. So we are, uh, happy to be able to do that. So it is a big project, a lot of curbs, a lot of driveways, a lot of milling. So, right now, this project will probably take the money. If it looks like by any, uh, small miracle, it's not, I will bring you back a list of the, uh, next potential streets, depending on how much is left, what little bits might be able to be done. But I wouldn't go buy a lottery ticket on that or anything. So, um, we are excited. Ginny has also, has applied for some safety money, and we'll see if we get that. We're looking at a traffic signal, uh, at some point there at Sixth and Union. Uh, that's a dangerous intersection there. We have a lot of accidents. We looked at a roundabout there, but a roundabout will not fit, will not work right, but we are looking at, at trying to signalize, uh, that intersection in the future with some safety money, uh, to make sure that, uh, we have a safe intersection there. So, that's where we're at right now, uh, on good news. Uh, it's, most of you probably heard that the state legislature this year did pass some additional local, uh, funding for roads and streets. Uh, they took the motor vehicle, uh, into the motor vehicle fund. Now, the state police will not be taken out of that to be paid for, nor will the bureau, uh, mo, the license branches. So, that money will go back in along with 1% of the sales tax. So it'll generate about $61 million of new money for local roads and streets, of which we will get some because we had the foresight to pass a wheel tax. And because we've passed a wheel tax, we'll be eligible for those funds. Uh, the senate version started with that, that, uh, communities that did not pass that, uh, local option, cause you had a way to do it locally, um, you needed to pass that to be able to get some of this new money. So we're going to be in good shape, and hopefully we'll get some new money as that goes through to do some roads. So, this is where we're at for now. As that unfolds, and we know exactly what that's going to be and when, we'll, we'll certainly come back to you. But for right now, for this chunk of money that we've collected locally, uh, we're going to be using that on Union Street.
Any questions for the mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Will that construction in Union Street, will most of that be done before Purdue comes back? Or what's the plan for the construction?
Yeah, we're try, we're, we're hoping to, that it will all be completed, at least the major part. We may still be doing seeding and some things like that, but our, our hope would be that it will be... We're going to do our best, so, I mean, that's why we're appropriating it a little bit, or this is a little bit earlier than we normally do, so we'll do our best to get that done.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, in the future, are we going to continue to, uh, use these wheel tax funds for one big project?
No. No. We, North Street was imperative that we got North Street done. I think this road is imperative, cause it's in bad shape, and it's such a long stretch. And then I would see us the next two years going back to several smaller roads and trying to get several smaller roads down. This road's a big stretch, and we kicked it off the list last year because we didn't have the money to do it. So, we need to get it down.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then, conduct a roll call vote on 2013 on first reading.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Heidi?
How about moving for a public hearing on ordinance number 2013-10, June 3rd at 7:01? Have I got that down?
Yeah.
I'd like to second that.
All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, thank you. Ordinance 2013-11.
An ordinance to amend ordinance 2012-20, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana for the year 2013, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire department.
With pleasure of the council, Mr. Clinker?
We'll be here and approve ordinance 2013-11.
Second. Discussion by members of the common council. Hi tonight, Mr. Campbell, you're kind of intimidating. Well, you had to behave, cause he was... I'm glad you're, uh, respecting authority at rank.
Uh, Patrick Flanely, Chief of Police, Lafayette Police Department. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Sorry about that, I was waiting for my cue. I missed it apparently. Uh, in an effort to be brief, uh, I just wanted to explain real quickly what we were, what we were doing. We're, when, um, last month, technician Frank Schmidt, after 23 years of service with Lafayette Police Department, suddenly decided to retire. And with him, he took a lot of institutional knowledge with him and, as the founding member of our in-house IT staff. Uh, Frank did a tremendous job for the police department, and really started our program from the ground up, where we, years ago, we were with two desktop computers, to now, officers are working independently out of their vehicles with a tremendous amount of technology in use every single day. Laptop computers, wireless devices that connect us to a network within the city. We have a county network. There's just a lot of moving parts, and, that Andy can speak better to, um, as far as the maintenance and the requirements that are needed to maintain that. So, with his departure, we looked at that position and tried to evaluate whether it was best utilized as a, as a police officer position or an IT position. I think we came to the conclusion that bringing a, a person with a background in professional IT work, a fresh set of eyes to the police department, looking at the way that we're utilizing that technology, to see if there's anything that we can do to improve it, and maybe make a shift moving forward, uh, make, make sure that we're maintaining, uh, the technological edge, so to speak. And with, um, after, after looking at it, we decided that it was the best route moving forward. It gives us an opportunity to, to expand and spread that knowledge over, over an entire department, rather than having it confined to, to one or two people. Uh, we can absorb some of the, some of the impact if we have, if we have issues. We have a greater number of people working on, on our solutions and our problems, and, and also, uh, the, uh, future of technology moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Andy Mylon with the IT department. Um, just to expand on what, uh, Chief Flanely said, uh, you know, when Officer Schmidt first started in his technician role, the civilian city IT department was really still in its infancy. So, um, as the chief indicated, over the years, the responsibilities really grew. Um, and Officer Schmidt did a great job, uh, expanding his role over the, over the time period. Um, now, you know, every squad car is equipped with a laptop, as well as many other devices, as well as all the computers that they have in the office. And now with the recent, uh, addition of the training center, um, up on South Street, you know, the responsibilities are even multiplied. So, the chief and deputy chief and I spoke, and along with the mayor, we agreed that the LPD technician position would be best positioned in the IT department, reporting to the IT director. So although the two computer networks are completely different, um, there will be value having resources available from the IT department. It's what we do every day. So, um, right now, we have an existing IT employee assisting LPD in this interim period. We've already found some opportunities for, uh, potential improvement in certain technical areas, and, um... And hopefully that means a better product for LPD. Yes. Well, it's a unique situation. The Lafayette Police Department is part of a multi-agency network, the public safety network. So they are connected with Tepica New County Sheriff, uh, as well as West Lafayette Police and Purdue Police, which is great for this community. It's, uh, it's probably a very unique thing to have the level of cooperation that these agencies share, um, openly. But it is completely separate from the civilian network that we have supported and continue to support.
Andy, could you just talk to us about the financial impact of this? Uh, the PAT-4 category, what's the salary range? And how's that compare to what we were paying when it was, with, with the police department?
It's alright, I'd like to defer to the controller, Mike Jones, for that.
Mike Jones, controller. Uh, the salary between the two is about a $300 savings a month, actually. Uh, between the police officer and, and the, uh, PAT-4. There's also a difference in savings with the, uh, retirement. The sworn officer's retirement is quite a bit higher than, uh, what the civilian, uh, used to be per, it's impers now. So, uh, there is, there is some, some savings there, uh, to be realized, and, and we'll use that, obviously, to, uh, facilitate this transition, so...
What's the salary range for this particular position, PAT-4? I don't...
It's about, uh, $2,400. I'm sorry, I, I know the pay periods. It's about $2,400 for the sworn officer, about $2,100 something for the, uh... Every two weeks. Um, I'm going to have to take my shoes off to get the annual.
Let's not say we do.
Sorry, I, I don't know the annuals off the top of my head, but, uh, there is some significant savings there.
Does that now then put another officer back on the street?
It, it will eventually, yes, put another officer back on the street. So it's, it's really a win-win across the board. Get it that way. Eventually, we'll get an officer. Yeah, it's, it, it won't happen right away, but it, there will be an officer be available to go on the street. Uh, we'll probably address that in the 2014 budget. Get it sorted out.
There being none, with the clerk then, conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-11.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-12.
An ordinance to amend zoning ordinance Tepica New County, Indiana, Uso Amendment Number 76, agricultural rental hall.
With pleasure of the council on this, uh, Mr. Aldrich Meyer?
I, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2013-12 on first reading.
To Reynolds?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. I think this is, uh, one of those ordinances that we have to approve in order to have it go with the towns of battleground and...
Like, uh, President Campbell, it's like, uh... Basically, this came out of somebody wanting to have a rental hall in, in a rural area for basically private functions, weddings and receptions, and there was no provision, uh, in our current ordinance for that. So the area plan commission recommended, and it got approved by the area plan commission unanimously, to, uh, add this additional category that has, um, primarily a focus on rural, uh, areas. And that's why, um, you know, the City of Lafayette has limited, uh, opportunity for this type of, uh, zoning and use to occur. But since we're part of the unified zoning ordinance, it gets presented all the bodies that are part of that, uh, including, uh, the City of Lafayette.
Any questions of Mr. Chosnick or our representatives on the area plan commission? There being none, any comments by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then, conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2013-12.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-14.
Very bottom.
Ordinance 2013-13.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance Tepica New County, Indiana, to rezone...
In order to amend the zoning ordinance in Tepica New County, Indiana, to rezon certain real estate from R1B, R2 and R3 to R1U, R2U and R3U, Monon Neighborhoods.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move that we here and approve ordinance 2013-13.
Mr. Downing.
Second.
Comments by members of the common council? Yes, ma'am.
Amy Jacobson, Community Development Director. As you may know, several months ago, the city had acquired some, a few parcels in the Monon Neighborhood through the county sheriff's tax sales. And we went through, as staff, we went through the rezoning process for those individual parcels, and going through the lengthy process, we had a discussion with the Area Plan Commission about rezoning a whole large area of that neighborhood that would be appropriate to rezone all at once. All of these properties were zoned at some point for more of a suburban kind of development, and they developed quite a long time ago in a more urban area. So the building setbacks don't fit the way those houses were actually built. So it's appropriate to rezone the lots to, or the whole neighborhood to the urban zoning, so that the houses that are there can be in conformance, with, most of them will be in conformance with that new urban zoning. It's time-consuming, expensive, and very complicated for individual property owners to go through the process, and they have to go through the process for even small kinds of improvements. So we think this will be very beneficial for the property owners that are there. We held an informational meeting at McAllister Center for the neighborhood on January 17th, and the neighbors that did come to that meeting left with very positive feedback, asked good questions, they were very supportive of the rezoning. We also sent a letter out to all the property owners on March 5th, letting them know of the rezoning process through the Area Plan Commission and the county council, and also a legal ad was published, as required. So with, I respectfully ask that you support this request for rezoning.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and this was approved unanimously at the APC also.
I would just comment, Amy, I was at that meeting with the neighbors, you and the staff from APC were there as well, and I thought that was really very helpful, when you're talking about a large chunk of residents like this, is to go out to the neighborhood and have that meeting, and I think all the neighbors were really appreciative of having the information made available to them, answered all their questions, so that by the time it gets to us, most of any wrinkles that might be in it were ironed out, so I appreciate your help on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Members of the audience wish to address this particular ordinance?
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Meyer.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Allers Meyer. Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-14.
In order to amend the zoning ordinance in Tepica New County, Indiana, rezon certain real estate from I-3 to GB, Eva Gada petition.
It's a pleasure of the council.
I move to hear and approve ordinance 2013-14 on first reading.
Second.
Tim Broden, I'm a lawyer here in town, I represent Guyad Auto Sales, and basically, they had purchased this property in 2010, and would like to use it to expand their current business of a car lot, and they had purchased it from the owner of the Overtime Tavern across the street, and basically, it was explained that when we were before the area plan, that because a car lot can only, couldn't operate in this industrial, that that's why they had to request that it be changed to the, have it rezoned to the general business, that's correct. Thank you.
That tavern is going to close? I mean, I thought that was a good excuse. That's more of a...
No, he was just using it as like overflow parking, it's actually, it's on their side of 18th Street, and since he really didn't have use for it, I suppose, he sold it to the Guyad Auto Sales, and they were interested in it, so.
Any questions of Tim?
Just to clarify, it's GB all around this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
There being no questions, any comments or questions by members of the audience?
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Meyer.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Allers Meyer.
Hi.
Williamson.
Hi.
Downey.
Hi.
Eight to zero. Ordinance passes eight to zero.
First and final reading. Resolutions.
Resolution 2013-8, a resolution to approve the Lafayette Housing Consortium Home Program and Lafayette Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for 2013.
It's a pleasure of the council, Ms. Saltzman.
I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2013-08.
Brown.
Second.
Questions or comments for Mrs. Jacobson based on this presentation?
Thank you. Amy Jacobson, Community Development Director. This is the annual resolution that I bring before you every year for the Community Development Block Grant and home funds that we receive each year from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Although we don't know the actual budget yet, the actual numbers, it's, we need to, we're required to go through this resolution process, and then we will adjust the final numbers accordingly. If it's 2% more than we had budgeted, then the numbers will be spread accordingly, or if it's reduced a little bit, the same thing. But, so these numbers are based on the figures that we got last year. The city of Lafayette is part of the Lafayette Housing Consortium, which is made up of the cities of Lafayette, West Lafayette, Town of Battleground, and the unincorporated areas of Tepica New County, and we're expecting $678,302 of home funds for a program year 2013, and reprogramming $42,768.68, making the total $721,070.68. And these will be used for homeownership activities, rental activities, total organizational support and administration, and for the Community Development Block Grant Funds, as an entitlement city, the city of Lafayette is expecting $571,708, reprogramming $9,000 from previous grants, making the total $580,708. And those will be used for public facility improvements, clearance, removal of unsafe buildings, housing, social services, administration and planning, and I respectfully request approval of this resolution.
Questions of Mrs. Jacobson. Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by members of the audience?
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Meyer.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Allers Meyer.
Hi.
Williamson.
Hi.
Downey.
Hi.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. 2013-9.
Resolution of the City of Lafayette, Common Council, regarding approval of expansion of the Economic Development Area.
It's a pleasure of the council, Mr. Heidi.
I move for passage of Resolution 2013-09.
Clinker.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Sir, Mr. Mayor.
Chairman, this is the final step on a long process that we've been on here recently to consolidate the Crease-Tiff and the Central Tiff into one economic development and Tiff area. This is precipitated by the developments at Home Hospital, as you probably all are aware, without too much historical data here. Home Hospital's been sitting empty for quite some time, and there is the opportunity now for some new development to take place in that area. In fact, there is a meeting coming up. And after Dennis and I and some others studied the area and began to look at what opportunities might be there, we felt there was value to bringing these two Tiff districts together at this particular time with the development in that area. And some of the reasons for that is we began to look at how we would collaborate to create opportunities when it comes to road, trails, infrastructure, greenways, green spaces, coordinating with the school, as we looked at our parks, as we looked at Murdoch, and we looked at Sunnyside School, Murdoch Park and Murdoch School, when we looked at wayfinding, when we looked at signage, when we look at economic development, we feel that there are some good opportunities that will be available to us by this consolidation and working in concert together with those two areas. And so we have been through the council, redevelopment, down to APC, back to redevelopment, back to the council, and this is the last step on the process. But we are very excited, we think there are some great things going to be happening up in the Columbia Park area, and we think bringing the resources of these two areas together, we can do better long-term planning and put our projects together in a way that creates the greatest impact for all our citizens. So we would appreciate your support and look forward to working with all of you to make some really good things happen in the area.
Yes, Thursday, there will be a meeting. I think everybody has been emailed, I know we got back one of, was it tomorrow already?
Yeah.
That's right, okay, tomorrow, yes. Well, I'm glad we talked about it then.
I think you missed it.
But there'll be an announcement made for the public and for the neighborhood, and we think everybody is going to be really excited. A lot of good things happening.
Any questions to the mayor concerning this, Tim? Comments by members of the audience? Doctor Roll Call vote on Resolution 2013-9.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Meyer.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Allers Meyer.
Hi.
Williamson.
Hi.
Downey.
Hi.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Reports of standing committees.
We didn't get that memo.
Reports of special committees. Reports by the mayor.
Two things, since we brought it up, yes, the meeting is tomorrow at 6 o'clock at the Jinx Rest, and so I hope everybody can attend, that's possible, it's going to be a fun, I hope a fun meeting, a good meeting. And then I did want to remind everybody that on Thursday at, I'm sorry, Wednesday, there are a lot of meetings going on, on Wednesday at 10 o'clock, you have all been invited to the announcement that will take place out at SIA, and we just wanted to remind all of you of that. I'm not at liberty to disclose anything at this point, but certainly wanted to remind everybody about that invitation, and would certainly encourage any of you that are able to make it to attend, so, all right.
It's the ladies and new business. Do we have an appointment? Apparently, it's a council appointment of a Mr. Jack Walkie to the police. Meyer.
Move to approve Mr. Walkie to the police civil service.
Clinker.
Second.
Any comments or discussion by members of the common council? How long has Mr. Walkie served on this?
I think I can vote on this. He might have spent serving on as long as you've been on this body, Mr. Campbell, I don't know.
Third grade.[1429.83][1429.83](laughing)
Yes, sir. Seventy-two. Any comments about this? Clerk there and conduct a roll call vote on Mr. Walkie's appointment.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Meyer.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Allers Meyer.
Hi.
Williamson.
Hi.
Downey.
Hi.
Mr. Walkie's been approved.
Thank you. Reports of councilmen. Public comments.
I noticed this evening, as we were talking about the parking situation, there was almost an apologetic attitude toward a parking, or a towage. If we're going to have laws and you don't enforce them, what do you think the odds are they're going to be followed? Seems to me that we have set a pretty good example of being a town that does not enforce our laws. This body spends a lot of time researching and bringing laws into existence, and then if we sit on our duff and don't do anything about it, it doesn't do any good. The parking, for instance, if you don't tow them, they're going to be there. You put the signage out there, and if they violate the signage, I think it's fair to tell the people in the immediate area that you are going to enforce the signage, and then do it. When I had a business on the west side, if I didn't enforce the signage, I didn't have a place to park. It was just that simple, that people would park, students would park, and you didn't even have a place for your clients. But that's just one example. We have laws against gambling, and we don't enforce them until you have to, and that's five to seven years before you enforce it. Then you have a big raid on every tavern in town that is doing gambling, and you don't enforce it. And most of the taverns involved with it, get involved with it because they're forced into it in order to keep their clients, because the clients are going to go to the people that gamble. So if you don't enforce it, it's going to go on. I think if you examine yourselves, not just you, but all of us, examine ourselves, and think about it, 90% of the problem, you know, 79.4% of all statistics are just pulled right out of the air, you know, but anyway, 90% of the problems we have in this country are a result of failure to enforce laws that we already have on the books. We don't need new ones, okay? But we do need to enforce them. Thank you.
Other comments by members?
Perry Barby, 3700, Red Bud. I first got to say, a couple weeks ago, on my recycling day, on Thursdays, I got a letter, a note on there, violation note on my recycling tab, it was too heavy.[1656.83][1656.83](laughing) I know, that was the first giveaway. First of all, I want to apologize, I think we have outstanding crew that knows it, and I put too much junk in the, my plant up the yard, and the rain never helped, my baggage got wet, and I'd like to thank the crew that has been working on the broken mines, water mains throughout the city, I think they've been doing an outstanding job. I've been hearing all my journeys all over town, that couple bricks we had, and they've been out doing a outstanding job getting them fixed in a timely manner. And I wanted to thank, summer and spring's coming up, and the people that's, they be shutting, or needs extra help, that can't do the lawn work, I want to encourage the people that can do a little bit, help their neighbors out, and encourage them to help to make their neighborhood look nicer if they can. And don't offer, just make your neighborhood look nicer itself. And I want to encourage everybody with, help the clerk with her clean sweep this June, I think it's June 3rd, June 1, she tells me. So please, get your business, or your organization, or just your family together, and clean up the neighborhoods. And I want to encourage all, wish all you ladies up here and all you ladies at home, and Happy Mother's Day this weekend. Y'all take care.
Comments by members of the audience? Heidi.
I do, I have something, I just have something quick. You know, you guys are kind of giving Mr. Campbell a hard time, for he's been on the council for so long, but being on the honor flight with him on Monday, he still has it. He's got a nice picture here with the Miss Marilyn teen.[1787.83][1787.83](laughing)
What happens in Baltimore is supposed to... Mr. Heidi.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All his favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.